Anybody want the library? Anybody else?
Library board or library itself?
Library board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
And that should be probably your worship, the Western County's regional library instead of the...
Okay. Okay, we've got the RAN liaison and oversight.
Your worship, I was... Actually, I was listed as an alternate, and I haven't attended a meeting, I just haven't had time. So if someone wants to be an alternate, they're certainly welcome to be one.
So I am, I'm gonna step down as chair. We, if somebody wants that committee, I'll stay if nobody wants it, but if somebody wants it, I don't mind giving it up.
When do they meet?
Um...
It's all over the place, isn't it?
It's all over the place, and it's, sometimes it's Digby, it's Argyle, Barrington, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll do it. I'll go, yeah.
Really?
I'll take one for you.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion for, for Counselor?
So.
Okay, Counselor Mooney? Okay.
Question?
Deputy Mayor? Did I just say Counselor Mooney? Mayor Mooney?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Doctor Recruitment, that's me.
I think your worship may be, I think, uh, we got the...
Go ahead. You're good.
I'd like to maybe nominate as the alter, I've been sitting there as an alternate, but I think maybe Counselor Steve Berry or Counselor McLeod might be, and Jim's background is, is a health professional, might be an asset to that committee. I know we have a really good committee with Dr. Harold Cook, Dr. Moses. I think Counselor Hood would be really good, and Counselor Steve would also be good because of his, uh, his age differential. So some of those people that we're talking to might be a little younger than myself and, and Jim, but I think he, and it meets in the afternoon, Steve, I think that you'd probably enjoy that.
I, I've been attending the last two or three meetings, just sitting in the...
Yeah. What do you think? You have to agree to it, though.
Make a motion, your worship, that we appoint yourself and Counselor Steve Berry to the, I think, I was sitting as an alternate, but to the Doctor Recruitment Committee.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Solid Waste Park, Phil and Cliff.
I, I'm not on that, your worship.
No, that's me and Cliff.
I, I would like to, in service, frankly, it's one of the, is, is a good committee to serve for me.
Yeah.
My engineering background.
Yeah, it does, and I would love to not. I don't, I mean, I, I'm trying to switch up what I'm doing, so, does anybody want that? It's at nine o'clock in the morning.
Your worship?
We can't, we, you know what? We have only a couple left, and, uh...
Your worship?
Yes.
Make a motion that we...
Point Counselor Hood and Counselor, uh, McLeod to the Solid Waste Park. I think you...
Does anybody else want it? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Green Energy? Who wants on that one? Steve wants on that one? Wager on it now, are you okay with that?
Just fine.
You've got some big files.
I have.
You really do. Okay. Does anybody else besides Steve want green energy? Go ahead.
Your worship, I'll make a motion, we appoint Counselor Steve Berry to the Green Energy Committee.
So second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. 101 Highway Committee?
Um, your worship, I'll make a motion, I don't know, uh, we haven't met the, one of them we haven't met in a year or two, the other one, the Digby one. Uh, we go about twice a year, I have no problem doing that again, along with the UNESCO Biosphere.
Okay.
I have that, that's about twice a year, I have no problem with those ones.
All right. Does anybody else want it?
I'll make a motion if Phil would be...
Okay. Moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. 103, is there a 103 committee?
Yeah, we haven't, hasn't met no one. Yeah, we just did three.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Lake George Advisory?
Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion that we appoint myself, Counselor Hood, to the Lake George Advisory Committee. We've been doing some good, good work lately, and I think we've kind of rebuilt a rapport with the citizens and some of the landowners out in that area. And we've had some very good meetings, and like Counselor Hood said, there is some files there that he's been working with, with Charles, and some of the new regulations that have to be implemented, and I think we're, uh, got a great committee to work with.
Does anybody else want the Lake George Advisory? Okay.
Second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. So the only other one up here, we had, we went back to the Mariner Center. So CAO, what we have to do is, is take somebody off and replace? That's what all the councils are doing?
Right. Your worship, so, um, we recently amended, and by recently, I mean about six months ago, we amended our Mariner Center, um, agreement with our, with our partners, the District of Yarmouth and Argyle. And in doing the amendment, what we did is we created a seat or a place on the board for a counselor from each of the three municipalities, and, uh, and basically eliminated a seat for one of our citizen reps. So we have three citizen reps who've all indicated that they're interested in continuing, and we have two seats, and so, uh, council has to make a decision and thank one of our volunteers for their service on the board.
Okay.
I should say at least one, because you may have applications.
Yes. So what do we have for applications, folks? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I guess, Jeff, my question is, we can't put any more on the board than what we're, what's shown us, that we can't increase the membership? Okay. Just, I understand, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Hood.
Um, before we do the appointments, I want to ask this question. We've had some issues in the last two years at least with, um, the board. I'm not pointing fingers at the board members, other than to say that collectively, I'm not satisfied that the board members fully understand their roles as directors of that board in terms of who's the employee and who runs the board. We've been pitchforked into some awkward situations during this term of time. I'm not satisfied that. Senior management there hasn't had a major influence on the board in terms of the decisions and courses they've taken. I've been very disappointed in that. We have had a management board before, uh, was very careful in, in making sure that Mariner Center ran on a fiscally responsible basis. I've pointed out before that we obtained numbers indicating that management board in the past ten years has gone from practically zero operating deficit to something close to $250,000 per year. We're embarking maybe on a, a new venture to expand the center, maybe, certainly under discussion. And I want to make sure that when we go forward on this, that board members are cognizant of their obligations to ensure that the facility, that they are charged with the responsibility of running, is pursuing a mandate through the executive director and employee of the board, um, that's more in keeping with the stated wishes of the owners. I'll say no more.
So I think we're, did you want to say something to that? Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we're in that, we're, we are in that process now with the, with the mission and visioning, um, and the meetings that we just had together as, as owners. So, so to be able to clearly articulate, um, what's expected is important, and we haven't done that to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Hood.
I could be going wrong. My comments are intended to try and put up, of the main concerns that I've heard councils express. For now, I'll say they're my personal concern. I'm not trying to speak for the council.
Nope. That's fair. Okay. So, folks, we need to do this. On the Mariner Center, um, I, I believe Linda Gallagher was just appointed, for some reason, I think she's the last, no?
She's the most recent.
She's the most recent appointed.
Who's the next one after that, your worship?
Um, I think it was Matthew Tross. Mike Randall's the chair. So we need to figure out which one. Sorry. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, additionally, you do have two applications. We did a call for applications for citizens interested in sitting on advisory committees and boards, and I just bring to your attention, as you're, as you're pondering your, your situation, you do have applications from two citizens that are, should be in front of you. Uh, a Mr. McDonald and a Mr. Frost. So I think it'd be fair to keep those in mind as you're, as you're considering your motion.
You're on.
I'm just looking at, I know we're talking about the Mariner Center Board, your worship, but I'm looking at some of the other committees, and it looks like, do we just roll them over, or it looks like we don't have, uh, everybody was contacted, Lindsay, I guess, with, if they wanted to reapply? Because I don't see anybody, I see one for the Recreation Committee, and I don't see maybe one other for the, maybe two others for the Planning Advisory, maybe?
So, your worship, uh, we don't ask, uh, sitting members to submit in writing.
Okay.
We just simply ask them if they're interested in continuing, and if they are, then, uh, we let you know, and if they're not, we let you know.
Okay.
But if they're interested in continuing, we don't ask them to send in a, a paper letter of, of interest.
Okay? All right. I, I need a motion, folks.
A motion to...
I, I need, I need a motion to, with a name, with one of... The motion is to, yeah, to appoint three citizens. Oh, gosh, yes, 'cause we're putting Wade's name. Okay, so I need a motion with two names in it, citizens, for the Mariner Center, because you're the third. Or whoever's taking that, if it's you or Steve, because I don't, it's 'cause of the timing. Right? So whatever, you decide. So who wants to make that motion?
I'm figuring it out. Looking to see if... Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion that, uh, what weight, Jeff, do we put on, are they all weighted equally if they are residents of the town of Yarmouth or not?
Go ahead.
So we passed a motion, I think it was probably...
Four years ago.
Just four years ago?
Yeah.
To allow appointments of, of, uh, people who don't necessarily live in town, but are owners or directors of corporation in town.
What about some of the concerns that Counselor Hood expressed previously with, uh, maybe not an orientation, but an overview of their roles and responsibilities?
Right.
In regards to, uh, the town's ownership position?
Yeah, so what, one of the things that, uh, that we don't do especially well, but we obviously need to do better, is providing support to our boards, um, in terms of governance training. And, uh, I've talked to my colleagues about that, and particularly with Mariner Center, as we're doing this visioning, uh, mission process that will turn into strategic planning within the board, is that they do need, uh, and all of our boards need, some governance training, so they really understand their roles and responsibilities as, particularly as board members.
Uh, who's, how's it go for longevity? You said it's Linda's first?
Linda's just the, the last one.
Linda's the most recent appointment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike has been on there for a fairly long time, but he was initially an appointee of the municipality of Yarmouth.
Yeah.
And so when Argyle became a funding partner about four years ago, uh, we reduced the number of citizen appointees that each of us made from four to three. We had an opening, uh, Mike qualified, and council appointed him as a town appointee. So he went from being a municipal appointee to a town appointee about four years ago.
Okay. Counselor Hood?
I'm thinking as I go here, but, um, if we move forward on a new, uh, partnership approach here, three municipal units, it might be wise to consider removing the so many per council appointees and go to a collective where, um, the three municipal units collectively decide from a pool of applicants? Who, who aren't determined by residence necessarily?
Yeah.
And we might follow some of the examples that we're seeing now where potential applicants, frankly, are vetted. For instance, when the, uh, NSFM sought applications for appointments to the Property Value Services Corporation, I had to submit to an evaluation by an outside third party. And before I was appointed to that, and there, I, I don't think I was the only person applying. And I think that the entities, they, it would be maybe CAOs and counselor two from each municipality would do the vetting of the applicants, some, or some, some kind of a way we would have that done, and, um, they would make recommendations in that way. But anyway, this is, we're not there yet?
We're not there, yeah.
And, and able to do that, but I think we should be thinking that way on this.
I need, I, I need some...
And, and, but to your point, rather than appointing people and then trying to sit them down and say, "Well, what do you really think about this?", we ought to be finding out before we appoint them. How do you think? What are your visioning? That kind of a process should, should be going ahead. What is your concept of operating? And we ought to know those things before we appoint people.
That's a good point. That's a really good point, Counselor. Jeff, uh, what do they meet, monthly? How's the time constraints? And I, I know Jim, Counselor McLeod's always worried about, about...
And the vetting includes political appointees that are going on there from councils as well.
That's right. Counselor Hood is, or Counselor McLeod's always worried about, uh, staff time, staff. If we appoint, we've already appointed Counselor Cleveland. Is there an opportunity within the next, when's the next meeting for the Mariner Center? Is it within a month?
They just had one this week, yeah.
Do they meet monthly?
Yeah.
To only appoint Counselor Cleveland right now, don't appoint anybody else, then go through that process, or is that too, is that gonna be the time constraints to, uh, to constricting right now?
I love it.
Because, because if you go through the scenario that Counselor Hood said, there might be somebody that's already on that board, or somebody that wants to be on that board, might not want to work those in that environment, right? They might want to go in with their own agenda, they might want to go in with a different idea, they might want to go in with some other scenario, but if they work under the constraints and the confines of, of, they're our appointees and our voice on that board, they might not want to work on the board in that way.
Your worship, I, I wasn't expecting that question, so what I'd like you to do, if, if it's okay with council, is to table this discussion to the end of the meeting, give me time to pull out our intermunicipal agreement. I'd like to have a look at that before I, uh, comment on maybe a scenario that allows the board to continue to function with, uh, set sufficient town representation while we do a process as you suggest.
What about what's, yeah, how about the other scenarios, we keep it in, as we, as it is, well, we still have to get, still have to do one person, but, okay, I, I'll just table it.
Table it to the end of the meeting.
Make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Till later in the meeting, your worship.
Sounds good. Okay, we're at the top here. Planning Advisory. Who else, um, do we have a list of who else applied?
I'm good, I'm just gonna step out, I'm okay.
So we've got one, two, do we only have three citizen reps? John Ryan, Neil Rogers, and Rod Rose, but we had a couple of applications.
I think we have another citizen, your worship.
It says four councillors, three citizens. Okay, so David Gorman applied. Um, I'm pretty sure. Planning Advisory, Harry Frost.
Harry Frost did.
Okay. David Gorman, Harry Frost. Plus the three that are on now.
It's three citi, I'll make a motion, your worship, that we...
Hang on a second.
I just, before you make that mo, a motion, I just have a, a comment. As you know, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, it's just this behind me is really loud.
Sorry about that. I can, I can shout even. As you know, I've been attending Modi PAC meetings recently, and, and Deputy John Cunningham, Deputy Warden, has been attending one or two of ours, although he wasn't here at the last one. It's always been my desire for me to participate as a member, a voting member of their committee, and for John to be a voting member of our committee. So I want, I want, I want to bring that up, and I'm, I'm very serious about that, and, and I, I don't know how to proceed. I don't know whether we've written a letter yet, that, if we authored a letter to the, to send to Big, uh, Leland and Victoria.
Yes, so we did do that. Did you want to say something to that?
Yeah. Thank, uh, thank you, your worship. I think maybe, uh, maybe if we reappoint the, uh, three current people on there, and then maybe we might have to, uh, rejig the Planning Advisory Committee to reflect what Counselor McLeod said, um, because I think we got...
Yeah, we need time to do that.
We need time to do that, that's, I don't think it's the time right now, and I think those guys in the municipality will have to agree with that.
So we have to change our policy.
We have to change our policy, that could be a several month process, right? But in the meantime, I think we should, uh, reappoint, uh, John Ryan, Neil Rogers, and Rod Rose as their community reps on the Planning Advisory.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I, I'll, I'll, uh...
But I think, I think when we get to the regular meeting, or the next committee of the whole, if we have a motion to what Counselor McLeod's concerns were, and then work with it that way, work with the municipality, then that...
You sent a letter, you know that?
Sent a le, I know we did that, but if they want to truly do that, and we want to do, accommodate what Counselor McLeod said, the chair of the PAC, then that's not gonna be fixed in this meeting, that's gonna be a four, five, six, seven month process.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, Jim, yeah.
So the motion's on the floor to, the motion's on the floor to, uh, appoint the three that are there, then we'll go forward and, and make changes as we need to, or as we can? So we're gonna have a seconder?
Second.
Okay. Oh, you already seconded that, sorry, Wade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay. So we are at Heritage Advisory. I don't think we got any more applications for that. I don't remember reading any.
No.
So a motion to reappoint Mary Ann Parnell, Randy Sonnier, and Michael Moore.
So.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Mariners, okay. Police Advisory. We have David Bissell, Dave Saxton, and Sonia.
I think I seconded recreation, your worship.
Where did, did I miss that?
Yeah.
Oh, I did, sorry.
I don't know what's needed.
Oh, wow, three citizens.
Yeah, I think, uh, if I could speak to that, your worship.
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, I'll make a motion that, and there's one name missing there, is Del Budrow. He's been a very active member of the committee, and I think, uh, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Neil McKenzie, Del Budrow, and looking at the applications, uh, Mr. Fred, Fred Mews of Seventy William Street. And if you look at his application, he's eight years Recreation Director for the Municipality of Cambridge Bay. He's taken Recreation Leadership Certificates from the Nunavut Artic College. Plus, he is, um, a volunteer with the Air Cadets, past president of the Recreation Parks Association of Nunavut, and the past president of, uh, the Cambridge Bay Monarch Hockey Association, so I think he'd be a great addition to our committee.
That works.
That works.
Okay. So that motion's made?
Seconded.
Seconded? Discussion?
Question, your worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, yasta. So it's one councillor and one industry. So Janice represents the industry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Because I haven't heard, uh, if Janice wishes to continue, she's certainly welcome to, she's a...
So Lindsay checked with Janice, right? Okay. Okay, so we don't know.
She's an active member.
But we had no...
She's an active member.
We had no other requests.
No one brought forward anyway, so...
So, we keep her on, or we have to ask? Okay. Let's reappoint her, and if she's not interested, we'll...
We'll go from there.
Okay? You want to make that motion, Wade?
I will, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Seconder, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Police Advisory. So we have Dave Bissell, Dave Saxton, and Sonia Ryan. Okay?
I'm on that thing, right?
Yep, you are on Police Advisory. So, so David Saxton is the provincial rep, so he's staying. Two citizens, one provincial. So two citizens, so Sonia's on it, and Dave Bissell. Did we get any more requests? Okay.
Is Dave Bissell active, your worship, or is he didn't?
Yeah. Yeah, he comes to all the meetings, and it's a hard call, 'cause Dave Tupper would be great, too.
David likes it. David likes it. I say David likes serving on the committee.
Yes. Okay.
Passing somebody out for, you know, if he wishes to continue, then he should be allowed to.
Remember, his son's a serving RCMP officer.
Um, who's that?
Burn and BZ.
Okay. We, we have Dave Tupper, who would, who would like to be on this, and we, and we have Sonia Ryan and David Bissell. Dave Saxton's a provincial rep. So he stays there, correct? Yeah.
Okay.
So it's only a choice of two, and we have three names. Looking for a motion.
Should we increase it? Jeff? What's the process for that? Actually, your worship...
Actually, I think, uh, I wouldn't mind doing that. I think we have three, three very good representatives, and actually, I think, uh, because we only appoint two, two citizens, and they take our recommendation for the provincial, but they might not always do that. I think it'd be great to have three citizens sitting on the Police Advisory, actually, with the provincial rep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh...
Prepare an amendment to the bylaw.
Yeah.
Directing staff.
Yeah.
Okay? Moved and seconded? Anybody want to discuss that? Are we okay with that?
No, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Philip on that one, a hundred percent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. So what's the word to Mr. Tupper?
Is it your intention to appoint him to the board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, folks. Okay. Don, Jim, Phil, I'll turn it, I think that's it.
Uh, your worship?
Yes, sir.
Actually, we do have a need for someone on the Communities in Bloom Board. We've had a couple of resignations there, and, uh, there's a lady with an application. and, uh, there's a lady with an application, she had also applied for a couple of others, Sandy Evelyn of Harborview Drive, very well qualified, also serves on the Garden Club, and I would like to make a motion to have her serve on Communities in Bloom.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, so Wade, are you, are you okay for it, you need a couple more committee members?
Um, I could use another, probably one, at least.
Yeah, one more spot.
One more spot available.
Okay.
And no one's applied, but I do have some people in mind that we could ask. Worst came to worst.
Oh, you were on, okay.
Yep.
Good, all right.
So we're good.
Uh, all right, so we're done with that, every, everything else good, are you good, Lindsey? Got everything?
Almost time to start the meeting. It's eight o'clock.
Five and a half.
Okay. Yes, so I can do that here, and then we can do, because I had it on the council agenda, so, so Steve and I were, councillor Steve and I were having a conversation about, um, an events committee, actually, I chatted with you about it briefly, too. So that nothing's falling through, fallen through the cracks, like, there, there's all kinds of things that we could be doing that, that we're not. And, do you want to speak to it, just what, what we're thinking?
Yep, um, I've had a few people contact me about, um, Yarmouth's birthday that just passed, we didn't do anything, I believe it was the two-hundred-and-fifty-eighth birthday for, since Yarmouth's existence, and, um, Canada Day coming, and different stuff, and people kind of asked me, what are we doing from our side of things, and I think it gets lost in the shuffle, maybe Rec will take care of it, maybe this will take care of it, but this way, if we have a committee, we can make sure that nothing slips through the cracks, have some way that the, the public can at least write in and say, this is going on, and we can just make sure that, you know, we're in on things, and we don't miss events like this, so.
Because it's, because it's, in, I want to say this right, it's, it's not up to us to do all that, but if we just had a, a, a small group sitting together, so I was thinking today, actually, I probably said it to Phil today, he's passing through the office, the Raptors are playing, like, right? Go ahead.
Well, you, you see what's in Halifax, and, you know, you see on TV, it'd be nice to do something like that, we do have.
They actually did it in Bridgewater.
We do have Canada Day coming up as well, so, you know, sometimes more than cake and the juice is kind of nice, too, so if we can get on a roll with that, and if we start this committee now, I don't see why by July first, we couldn't, you know, community barbecue or something, right, but I just think it shows good faith that we care about what's going on, and, you know, good for the public and us, so.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yep, so, uh, your worship, if, uh, if the intention, and I know there's no motion on the floor at this point, but, uh, if a motion is considered, I'd ask you to consider that a mandate for that committee be defined, uh, so that it isn't just simply a, a name and a, uh, a mandate that can, that can creep and, and be extremely broad, let's, let's establish what the role of the committee is, and put that in writing, and then, then, you know, you have a mandate and, and parameters with which to work, because I, I think, I think, as, I think you started to allude to, uh, there can be very high expectations of people wanting services, and, and not in all cases are, are citizens willing to step forward and be a part of, of creating those, those community events that we're, that we're speaking of, so, um, maybe the first step would be to, to define a mandate for such a committee.
Okay, so do we want to think about that, and bring it back to committee of the whole? Is that, is that sensible, Wade, what were you gonna?
Well, I was just going to point out a couple of things, um, first off, and it, it's a great idea, it's something certain I mulled over plenty of times, but you have to be careful not to step on others' toes.
Yes.
Because recreation does do a lot for, recreation isn't there for Canada Day, for example, other groups do things, so you just, it, it's, it's not as simple as it sounds, it's, you have to be aware of what everyone else is doing, so there's a little bit of complication there.
Yeah, so, so the other piece, um, keep, you can keep that on in case you need to answer me, the other piece is that, that, the expectations piece, right, I think we need to do something, um, to capture a, a few things that, that sometimes either get missed, or that we could really do something to make things more exciting here, but we have to manage expectations as well, because it's, it's, so the response I got was, was, what did you do for Canada Day, and, and the answer was, was, I, I don't know, what did you do? You know what I mean? Like, it's, it's not up to council to provide everything for every event, it, it really isn't, it's, it's extra, it's above and beyond.
It also costs money.
It does, it does cost money.
But if you have an events committee, you'd almost want to have some kind of a budget.
And it's the same as a lot of people think CFest is the towns, it's not. CFest is run by an independent organization, so all those things happen through an organization, so let's, let's maybe roll it around our brain, what do we want it to look like, what would the, Jeff's absolutely right, what's, what's the mandate? And, um, come back with some thoughts.
Sounds good.
Is that all right, what were you gonna say there?
Well, I, I was just gonna offer that maybe there's some work that can be done before, uh, committee of the whole, if, uh, if you wanted to, to appoint a small ad hoc group to sit with me, um, sometime over the next couple of weeks, and we can throw around some ideas, and try and kind of formulate what the mandate might be, bring that back to committee of the whole for discussion, so there's something to actually begin the discussion.
Okay, so I'll do that, I know Steve will, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I know that, you know.
No, I'm a hundred percent on board with that, so, yeah, just let me know. Should we make a motion to, to follow through with what CAO just offered?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you, that is the best way. Okay, so are we good with this, we're gonna, we're going to adjourn the committee of the whole, and then we're gonna come back to council, okay? So switch packages. All right. So, for those of, those folks joining us by Eastlink and online, uh, we just finished committee of the whole, and we are now into a council meeting, so I'm gonna call the council meeting to order, and stand for the singing of O Canada. O Canada. Our home and native land, true patriot love, in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
We wouldn't want anything on The Voice tonight, would we?
Oh, my God, yes, it's really bad. I was just gonna say that. Oh, my God. We are really bad. Okay. Go Raptors.
Go Raptors.
Let's get her done, so we can get home and cheer for our team. Okay, record of attendance, absent with regrets.
Councillor Barry, your worship, uh, Don Barry.
Okay. Uh, conflict of interest, anyone, and you can yell about the conflict when the i- issue comes up.
I'll make a motion, we excuse councillor Barry tonight, because it is probably one of the busiest nights at the school.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, approval of agenda, additions and deletions, so I have, who wants to do an addition? Anybody have an addition, you do.
Uh, your worship, I'd like to put hospital gala tables.
Okay, so under thirteen A, gala tables, I did, I just crossed it out, um, the events committee, so we can, we're adding that, so we can just, okay? Yep, C, thirteen C is committee appointments, so what we'll do when we get there is just all at once, take care of them. Are there any more additions or deletions? I'm looking for a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, looking for approval of minutes, water utility, May sixteenth. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, town council, May sixteenth.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, town council, May sixteenth, in camera.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, town council, May twenty-second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, committee of the whole, May twenty-second.
Uh, so moved, your worship.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, go ahead, councillor Hood. Uh, on either one? That's right, okay, so it didn't say that? Oh, it says absent with regrets, yeah, good, okay? Town council, May twenty-second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, no presentations this evening? You good? Okay. No, I'm not, dangerous and unsightly premises policy, it was revised, so, go ahead, there's CAO.
So, your worship, uh, this is a policy we talked about at the last, uh, committee of the whole meeting, it is a, a revision and update, a, a more explicit, uh, policy around, uh, dangerous and unsightly premises, I think perhaps the most important change that, and, and the one that has caused it to be brought forward at this time, was the, was the change with regard to repeat offenders, property owners who repeatedly, uh, leave their property in either a dangerous or unsightly condition, causing, uh, the town to have to go through the, the process of issuing orders and reminders and, and so on, so when that occurs, there is a, an administrative fee that will be applied to the repeat offender accounts, and tho- those fees will be, um, those fees and the cost for doing the work, if we have to undertake it ourselves, will be applied to the tax accounts, and, uh, so, your worship, we're looking for a motion to adopt the, the policy.
Okay, moved and seconded, um, I was just gonna mention, our bylaw enforcement officer would have some questions around this, did you, did you chat with him about that, like, when can you post, when can you find, and all those pieces?
Yeah, that's, we're fine.
There were some questions, yeah, okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion, go ahead, councillor Hood.
So. Is the, uh, do we have any, uh, outstanding premises in the town that are subject to an investigation or an order under this, under our existing bylaw?
Yes.
What's the status of the, uh, I'll call it, for sake of a better word, to date myself, the former F- Forshu Restaurant, Wagner's Restaurant? What's the status of that right now?
Help me, help me identify the property.
Oh, Wilsons.
Oh, Wilsons.
Oh, Wilsons, okay, so, um.
Jeff's just a young pup.
Yeah, okay, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to ask the, the administrator.
People were no, uh, appears somebody moved in there to occupy it as a residence here in the last couple of days.
Yeah, somebody did, I was gonna bring that up.
Okay.
So, I'm curious to know whether it's zoned in any part for residential, first, secondly, if there's an occupancy permit. I don't know if it's appropriate to raise it here, but the question arose because we're, we're talking about a dangerous and unsightly.
Yeah, so.
Is that, is it subject to any kind of?
So, rather than getting into the discussion about the specific, uh, property here, um, and, and because I can't answer your questions about the specific property here, off the top of my head, uh, I'd ask that you bring those concerns, uh, to me at the office, and we can, we can sit with the bylaw enforcement officer and clarify the status.
Look, it just popped into my head, but there are people on the street who are concerned about it and express their concerns.
Yeah, the building was unoccupied for a number of years, uh, I know that the building changed hands fairly recently, and, uh, I think I walked, I bumped into you on the street, and we, we had a quick moment.
I said your name just came up, what were we talking about, people moving into the building?
Yeah, so let's, uh, let's, uh, meet in the office and figure out the status.
Thank you, uh, CAO.
Okay, questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, and local improvement bylaw repeal and replace, CAO?
Uh, your worship, our, uh, our planner, Morris Lloyd, uh, worked on this, on this project with other staff, uh, the, the initiative was to, to review our local improvement bylaw, to update it, and, uh, and so, this would be second reading, so the first, uh, step here, your worship, would be to allow anybody from the public that wished to speak, give them the opportunity, and then the appropriate motion would be, depending on your wish, would be, uh, to either approve second reading, or to, uh, to defer or refer any issues back to staff.
Okay, so I, we are at the local improvement bylaw, and I will ask three times if anyone wants to speak to this, and if you want to speak to the issue, if you're in the audience, you can come up to the microphone and, and, and speak, so, um, would anyone like to speak to this? Would anyone like to speak to the local improvement bylaw issue? The last final call, would anyone like to speak to this? Okay, hearing no one, um, the recommendation is that council approve first reading to repeal and replace the local improvement bylaw number thirty-six. Moved by councillor Hood, seconded by councillor McLeod, any discussion?
Question, your worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, paving and patching two thousand and nineteen season tender results, okay? So we have in front of us. Usually we have a decision. Okay, there it is, the, the recommendation is that the tender be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Aberdeen Paving.
Uh, your worship will make a motion that we accept the recommendation from staff.
Okay?
I'll second that.
Seconded? Costs a lot to pave and patch. Okay. Paving and patching.
So we don't, you can't get to choose, uh, these highs and lows, or if there's, we have to do one or the other.
One or the other, yeah. They'll come, they'll come back.
He's just getting something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this. I want to make sure, so if it's possible, we're, we're, where partners would, rewarded parts to one, parts to another, if that's requested. Yeah, I think it might have only been like two parts, too, I think, if it was, it wasn't like four or five different components, it was two.
Sorry, councillor.
I was just wondering if there's a schedule or a timeline, or, um, you know, some information we can have on what will be paved, or, I get to ask that question quite often, so.
Yeah, I, I know, it's a big question, so, so Chad is the manager of Public Works, um, we'll just send him an email, and get that list, I, I don't know about timing, but, that, there is a way that they choose what they pave, um, there's, there's a scientific process.
Thank you.
The big question on timing is, can't do any of it until we go through the tendering process, and select, attend, and select a company to the work.
Exactly, and it hasn't been fit, hasn't been fit to pave, anyway, so, yeah.
And in this case, we're talking about patching.
Yeah, sorry.
Just to make it clear to everybody, we're not talking about paving whole roads here, we're talking about patching.
Exactly. Okay.
I'm okay with that, I've looked at it, I'm okay.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, um, side. Sidewalk curb program two thousand and nineteen results. So C A L, we have a, no, that's okay. We just, we're, we just okayed the paving and patching, but the question was, do we give it to one or can we separate it? Can we give some to one and some to the other?
I don't think we've ever split it up, and I'm not sure that it's practical to do so. But I have to ask the question.
Okay.
Well, we're okay.
Yeah, we did, but it's a question.
I think it happened maybe once where there was only a, it wasn't the, this kind of, maybe there were just two parts. Might even have gone back to the companies. I mean, I think we split one, we have split it before.
We split one, I think, yeah, we split this fire, like, we still...
But I mean, I looked at it, so...
Yeah, it was a gravel one, yeah.
Okay.
Salt or something, I don't know.
Okay. So, so this one is a sidewalk and curb, and it's recommended that the contract for the curb and sidewalk program be awarded to D's Decorative Concrete.
So, how much due diligence have we done on two nineteen Ts?
They've done it before.
Yeah.
They had the tender last year.
Go ahead, C A L.
Did they do the thing last year?
Um, is that what it says there? I, I would suggest, Your Worship, that I, I don't believe the manager would recommend unless he had done some due diligence. You know, he oversees this work and understands the importance of getting it right. The counselor mentions they've done it before, and that may very well be the case, but eludes my memory at this point, so... Yep.
Yeah, they're right, they have, yeah.
Well, one's, one's an incorporated company, you know that.
Doesn't say limited.
That's not an incorporated company or a small...
Do you know anything about that?
D's Decorative, sorry, that is a limited company.
Yeah.
'Cause I know.
How do you know?
I'm familiar with the company.
I know how to...
No, I'm, I'm familiar with the company.
Has anyone checked it out? It's a very big, no, it's an important thing.
No, no, and, and I, I know, 'cause I'm familiar with the company, that it's a, that it's a limited company.
All right, so, so if the work didn't get performed in the time soon, two one nine D of S B S Decorative Concrete, would we be thrown out of court for not suing the corporation?
Well...
Your answer has to be yes or no.
I know, it's D, I, sorry, I was trying to find something else for Jeff. Um, I can, I can find, that's not the, the legal name, it's D's Decorative Concrete.
So there is a legal name of it.
Yeah, it's not that, yeah.
And we often have to award a contract to an entity that isn't properly prescribed, or...
No, I assume the contract would actually be with the, with the actual entity.
You're asking this, Councilor, to vote for a nonentity at all? Well, want to write it down or what?
Can be fun.
Well, it's just described there, yeah, I'm not sure if the...
Okay, hold on.
So, if you, if you look, if you look at the, two things I want you to look at. One is that the recommendation actually refers to as D's Decorative Concrete, which is the name at the registry. The twenty nineteen appears at the top of both columns, so we know R and D Harris is not twenty nineteen R and D Harris Limited. I, I don't know why the year is there other than to indicate, there's last year's price and then there's this year's price. But the motion doesn't include the twenty nineteen.
I'll offer an amendment. The amendment, amendment offer would be that the contract to be awarded involves tender, provided contract is awarded to the company identified properly under the printout from the registry of joint stock companies.
Fair? We okay with that?
Just put your mic on, I'll say it again, I didn't, I didn't hear all of the words.
Oh.
I didn't hear all of the words, I saw, what was the amendment?
The amendment is simply that it's provided that the contract is awarded to the actual company as identified in the printout from the registry of joint stock companies. I've seen it here, we just pulled it up on the internet.
Okay, late. Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Committee appointments, so what we'll do, because we just went through them, we will do that as one batch, so a motion to approve the committee appointments. Okay?
Is that excluding the Mariner Center, Your Worship?
Yeah. Excluding Mariners, okay? Seconded, any discussions? Everybody okay with that? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, thank you. Doctor recruitment and retention committee re-community navigator budget. So, so I will just say that Angie Green and Carrie Muse are in the audience if we wish to have them come up and explain this piece. So basically, the ask is twenty thousand? Over three ye, oh, twenty thousand a year for three years. Okay, twenty thousand a year for three years. I, I will say this, out of this package, that recruiters are already employed at the provincial level. The role of the community navigator would be to assist the recruiters in providing detailed community support and communication. So we have, yeah, come on up, ladies. We, we have them on either side, but we don't have anybody focusing on us. So, did you, do you, you can share what you want to share, but I think council understands.
Sure, do you want our pitch, or do you know what's going on?
Okay. Does anybody have questions for them? I, I'm just gonna say from my perspective, I think this is the right thing to do. It's absolutely the right thing to do, it gives a focus on us. It, it's not taking the job really of anybody, it's just, it's just covering all of our bases.
Let's see, yeah, Your Worship?
Mm-hmm.
I think was the...
Municipality of Argyle, the first one to pass it?
Argyle passed it, right?
Argyle passed it, yeah.
They passed it last night.
They've committed funding.
Was it last, Argyle last night, or I was here last?
I think Tuesday night, maybe.
Last Thursday, I was there for when...
That's right.
The new warden got sworn in, and they had some discussion about it. And I think one of the concerns from one of the counselors wasn't about the amount of money, about what has they recruited somebody to the area and they move to Barrington? But I think one of the counselors kind of alleviated that fear by saying, there's people that travel from Pavniko to Barrington, Yarmouth to Barrington, Argyle to Barrington for doctors, and people come the other way. So as long as they get them in this catchment area, I think they were happy with the amount of money. They didn't have any, I don't think they had any qualifications on it or any impingements on it. I think they, they passed it without any restrictions. So I think that was the only concern that they had was, we recruit somebody here and they go to Barrington, but I think that's, it might be more coming the other way than the other way.
Counselor Mooney, we're approaching Barrington as well, it might not be on there, but Barrington has asked for a presentation. So they're considering a twenty dollar, or twenty thousand dollar allotment as well.
Twenty dollars, I'll go with it. We'll take it, sold.
So they want to be part of this, because ideally, we're recruiting specialists for Digby to Shelburne, basically. We are a regional hospital, so our, our specialists service the whole area. GPs would service this area, and, and Barrington wants to be included in that as well. I've had a doctor in Barrington, a lot of people travel there.
You know what, though? If you, if you live in Halifax, it takes you more than thirty minutes. Takes you longer than it would take to get from Yarmouth to Barrington.
That's right.
It's all relative, right? That's, that's close.
And they, they still feed into our healthcare system, they're still part of our, our healthcare system, yeah, yeah, so...
Okay, Councilor Hood?
Is this approved by the Nova Scotia Health Authority?
Sorry, what was the question?
Is this approved by the Nova Scotia Health Authority?
Yes, it is.
Hundred percent?
We've met, right away, we've met with the official recruiters that we have for this area, Councilor Hood. So our recruiters are based in Kentville, and she has an assistant based in Bridgewater. And we know, we know that we have to work with N S H A, this is not a competitive thing. We want to enhance what they do. Their region is huge, and it's difficult for them to recruit.
Don't they have the ultimate say on whether or not anyone you recruit will come here?
They, they did, they did, but they changed that, because, if I might. Because when I first started in, in this seat, we had a doctor recruitment team.
I was there, I know, I know about that.
Signing off on thirty-three doctors in a very short amount of time than the province, which I think is what Councilor Hood is talking about, the province changed the rules where they, you just couldn't go where you wanted to go. So they, they've recently changed that back, which is why we got that doctor recruitment team back up and running. So that's a very good question.
They basically stepped in and said, we don't want you, because you're spending public money, to compete with cheap municipalities that aren't spending public money to recruit doctors. That's what that was all about. So here's why I asked the question, I just found out, you tell me if I'm wrong, that our local hospital cannot recruit nurses graduating from the school in Yarmouth.
I cannot speak to that, sir. We're focusing on...
All right, so I'll say what I, what I've learned.
We're, we're focusing on physician recruitment right now.
I just learned this one here in the last three weeks, it was from the horses moat. Yarmouth Regional Hospital, as we know, is a nursing school up there. They ran a diploma course for many years. The hospital got free work from the students while they were students. The students got free good clinical, because they were right there and the hospital could go over there and get hands on them. And so, the Nurses Union eventually decided they were gonna go with a degree program, and we had to shut our school down. We were successful in convincing Dell Housing to put a program in and reopen the school thereby, ensuring that there was a pool of graduates coming out of that school and available for the Yarmouth Regional Hospital. Now, those graduates have to go into a pool in Halifax and are told where they're going to have positions.
In nursing.
Wherever in the province, the Department of Health wants to send them. Does, how many in the public in Yarmouth know that you cannot recruit, our hospital, people here cannot recruit out of that school for that hospital? And I'm afraid that this could be a wasted effort if the D H A or the Nova Scotia Health Authority goes back down this road. I'm really, I've been there, I was, I was on, I started with this doctor recruitment stuff, I started it.
But they just changed it, so we're good, and...
We're good until what?
Well, we're good until they change it, but if they don't change it, we're good.
We're work...
We're, we're good, we have to ba, we have to make decisions.
Well, I'm gonna vote for it.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, and I understand your frustration with that whole piece. I, I do. Right now, if we leave the nurses aside, because that's a different ballgame, we have a residency program up there that we better thank our lucky stars that we have, because they're not everywhere, and we are, we are retaining seventy-five percent of those doctors. It's unheard of. And, and so this ensures that, and it also, it just gives Yarmouth and area, we need, we need focus. We've got two that the province are paying for in Bridgewater and Kentville. We re, we just really need this.
Yeah. One of the residents that is graduating soon was offered, just received a job offer from the Health Authority after he said he was interested in Yarmouth. So that's a good recent example of, yes, he wants to come to Yarmouth, and yes, he got a job offer.
Yeah.
And, and to be fair, the Chamber of Commerce made that happen, because we got tipped off, we made the calls, and the offer, and the offer was made within two days.
Yeah.
So, having someone on the ground here, and the chamber is a very good vessel for that, because we have administration within, within the chamber that can look after that. We're apolitical, and we have a good knowledge of the community, we're business people in the community. We have a lot of contacts. A big part of recruiting doctors, you're not just recruiting the doctor, you're recruiting their family, finding a job for their spouse if they want one, getting the children into programs, and that helps with retention. Because once you integrate them into the community, that's how you retain the doctor. So it's not just a one-shot deal, they come in and, and leave. This is how we plan to do, a big part of retention is to get them involved in the community and, and...
So my fear is this, it's simple. You do that work, and it's good work, and you convince the doctor and his family to come here, and they're, they, they sign on. And you make an application to the D H A, and they change their minds, oh, no, you've got too many of those there now for your region. And you can't approve that one. I'm telling you, that's real.
No, listen, we, we, we understand that, but right now, they're letting us do it.
Yeah, we're working closely with N S H A on this, and Dr. Brian Moses is, he works for N S H A, and he's been a part of the development of this process, he's very supportive. We're working with Dr. Lois Bowden in Kentville, we're working with our recruiters, and we're working with people in Halifax on this, Councilor Hood, so I think we've got it covered. When there's a change of government, you're right, who knows what will happen. But right now, the immediacy of the situation means that we have to do something now and we have to address it. We have a team put together, including municipal support, that can address it right now, and I think we need to go with it, while, strike while the iron is hot and get this done.
Yeah.
I'll finish up. So on recruiting, you mentioned Kentville, and the person in Kentville. I received information indicating that there were probably three staff members at our hospital that could have filled in the position that recently became vacant. But the position was filled by someone who was closely connected to the person you're talking about in Kentville, by a person from Kentville. I'll leave it at that.
Go ahead.
Plus, Your Worship, in the, in the latest Deputy Minister shuffle, Dr. Tom Murray was appointed Deputy Minister of Health, and he's the one that established the residency program. Jeff, we were at the Grand Hotel when they came in, with Dr. Cook and, and told us what the program was gonna be. So he was at the bottom floor of the residency program being established in Yarmouth, and he is the new Deputy Minister of Health and the former Dean of the Medical School at Dell Hause.
Good stuff.
So, Your Worship, I'll make a motion. We accept the request that came from the, we accept a request coming from the chamber for the community navigator funding proposal. I don't think, I don't think, Your Worship, I'm not gonna put any conditions on it subject to any other funding from any other municipal unit, because if that happens, another unit doesn't fund it, they're gonna have to come in and rejig their numbers and come up with something different, but I think we should be, we might as well do it. And if the other ones don't feel as important, then they have to explain that to their citizens.
Yeah. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Unanimous.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. So now you, you have, you have us and Argyle, you went, you're going to Barrington?
And we're going to probably announce significant other funding in the immediate future.
Yeah. Yes, excellent.
We should have announcements next week, and we'll be posting the position in the immediate future, thanks to your support. So thanks for your support and your force, and we'll get this done.
So these other ones are coming along, and the municipality voted last night, but they didn't vote to support?
No, they put a condition on their approval pending provincial funding, and then a percentage matching the request of the province, so it could be very limiting. But with your support, the municipality of Argyle, and the potential support of the foundation, which we're working on, we're good to go, and, and we'll get this done for you.
Good stuff. Thank you very much for everything you're doing. I, I have to say this, the, we have a doctor recruitment committee set up, but the chamber has really done some work. And Counselor Durkey heads, and the municipality heads up that doctor recruitment, and there's a lot of good work being done. Go ahead, deputy.
I think we're going on to the Committee of the Whole, Your Worship, I think that's what I put my light on for. Motion from Committee of the Whole, made the twenty-second.
Yes, sir.
Your Worship, I move that council respond to the Public Services and Procurement Canada, indicating that we are not interested in acquiring the property of Fifteen Willow Street at its appraised value at this time. Street at its appraised value at this time.
So, just, you know what that is, right? That's the post office, okay?
And Counselor McLeod seconded that.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, Deputy?
Uh, Your Worship, I move that the town of Yarmouth increase its funding level for the YMCA to fifty-six thousand dollars through this fiscal year, representing an equitable share of the high end of their municipal request for financial support.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary?
Motion carried.
Motion carried, well done. Go ahead, Deputy.
And that is it, Your Worship?
That's all we did?
See, like, some of the work we did before that was approved.
Oh, that's right.
Cliff wasn't here.
Yeah, that's right. The other things, we, we approved after Committee of the Whole at those meetings, so we went through all those things.
Plus, Cliff wasn't here.
Citizen, that's right. Citizen advisory committees, planning advisory. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
Your Worship, we don't have any motions or recommendations to report for, for discussion, but we are working to promote the waterfront with, with an action plan, and that's taken longer than I had hoped, but we're making some, we may have to make some changes in our strategy and our bylaws to accommodate what we're hoping to, to accomplish. So, no report, but it's just that we have good ongoing activity.
Good, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Reports for information. Any questions for Committee Chairs? So to our new Counselor, it doesn't seem new, he just kinda slipped right in there. This is a chance for you, anybody to ask any, anybody that's sitting on a committee, any question. Go ahead, Counselor Hood.
So Counselor McLeod, just to pick up on your report, you're working on an action plan, is there any activity taking place with regards to problems we discussed a few years ago, the need to separate the bloodwater that's coming off the unloading of the herring carrier, as saners here in the summer, and keep it out of the, keep it out of the harbor, stop it from polluting our marinas and other parts of the harbor? Anything going on on that?
Go ahead.
There's, Counselor Hood, as far as I know, there's no active, ongoing discussion that come under the guise of the Waterfront Development Corporation, and a volunteer in that committee, Tim Kaiser, was doing some research at least a year ago. Time goes by, and I, and I have not checked in with him on that, but as a result of your question to myself, I can ask Mr. Kaiser and see, but as far as I know, Cliff, there's no definite-
We had discussions when I was last on the board, and we have two plants in town. The rest of the herring that's unloaded and the, and the bloodwater that comes off the herring as it's unloaded is exported out of our town by huge, big trucks that beat the hell out of our highways and all the rest, and I think it's high time that Waterfront Development Corporation moved ahead with that, the town moved ahead with it, because it's stupid to spend the kind of money we spend on a marina and then have visiting boats come here, and their water lines are cluttered with slime and guts and crap like that that's coming off those boats, and the technology does exist to clean that up. It also is dumb that we, that the feds permit it to happen in the harbor, because it creates an additional bacteria load in the harbor, which we're spending a lot of money to take out by removing human excrement in our sewage treatment plant. So, I don't think it's something that we can let linger for a long time, and I would like to see some action on that score.
So, so thank you very much for the reminder. Jeff, I'll, I'll speak with the right people on our Waterfront Development Corporation or Committee, and, and perhaps we can have a moment sometime. Thanks very much.
Good. Okay, we are, any more questions for Committee Chairs? We're good? Good question. We're on to additions. Thirteen A, gala tables, that would be you, Deputy?
Worship, yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I know we had a discussion once or twice, and I heard a couple tons in the community that we weren't represented at the hospital gala, but I'd like to put a motion forward, maybe refer to budget, that the town of Yarmouth sponsored two tables for the hospital gala, and with those tables, those chairs around the table, invite residency program members at the hospital and their spouses to sit at the tables. So, that'd just be another recruitment tool. And with yourself and maybe Natalie, but we'll put that to-
We need to be represented, and, and, or not, because we used to purchase tables. Go ahead.
I'm gonna be sorry for this. Um, I, I can't support that. And I, don't get me wrong, I, I like the gala as far as it goes, and I, I hosted the gala recently, very proud of what the hospital foundation does. But, in a time, in a town where poverty levels are what they are, spending money at the gala, granted it, yes, it is, it's a fundraiser, but I find it exorbitant. If we want to put money into the hospital foundation directly, I haven't got a problem with that. I don't believe that as a town, we should be putting that money there. I'm sorry, but that's, that's how I feel. Although if it's, if someone can convince me that it's an effective recruitment tool to bring people out for an evening, then maybe, but that would be about the sum of it. I'm sorry.
That would be just, I think, just addressing his concerns, Your Worship, I think that would be just one of many tools. I know you've brought, you've brought them out for a beer or two, you brought them out for some pizza, you brought them out to eat something else, they've taken tours of the area. That might be an opportunity for our residents to see the business community, people that support the hospital foundation, people support other fundraisers that the hospital, hospital does throughout the year, like the Radio-Thon, some of the other things, and I think you're not only selling your community to that resident, but you're also selling that community to their spouse or their significant, significant other, so if, I'd just like to make the motion refer to budget, and then if it doesn't make the budget cut, I have no problem with that. But I noticed that in the proposal for the Community Navigator, it might come out that some of that money might be used for promotional purposes, and a table might be purchased through, through that process, so I'd just like to make the motion to put it to, to budget process and see where it falls.
So we, just, just so you know, Counselor Cleveland, I'm not trying to convince you, we used to buy a table, and, and it's important that we are represented at these big fundraisers.
A hundred fifty bucks a table? Uh, it's a hundred fifty bucks a seat, I'm sorry.
It is, 'cause it's, because it's a fundraiser, it's, it's sorta like paying three hundred dollars for a golf tournament or baseball or something like that, but it goes, it-
And if I wish to spend that money, that's fine, but I'm not gonna ask the taxpayers to pay for it, I'm sorry. I just can't.
But they're not, they're not, it's, it's not that they're paying for the seat, they're paying, it, it's the donation, it's the, and we do that anyway. We donate to the hospital foundation.
Yes, we do.
It's just a different way to do it.
It's a hoity-toity way to do it. Sorry.
Okay. Nope, that's all right, that's okay.
What's it gonna be next year, Greg? It's gonna be Bollywood or something else?
Camelot.
Camelot?
Camelot, yes. Okay, so there's-
You can wait and burn him an effigy, bro.
A lot, a lot. There's a motion on the floor to direct it to, to budget. Go ahead, Counselor Hood.
Wade's not gonna burn an effigy alone. I've expressed personally to the hospital board my thoughts and feelings about these fundraising efforts. They raise, in their fundraising efforts with the gala and with the golf thing, just about as much as they spend. Their money is made from the endowments, which you could run for free. I'll say no more. It's a good thing, but if, if, if you wanna go, pay for it and go, as an individual.
Do you wanna say something?
Well, I mean, the-
Put your light on, we wanna hear this. If I don't want an argument.
No, the, I mean, the golf and the gala, they had, they net out the expenses, what's raised is what's raised, I mean, they raised fifty-four thousand dollars, but-
The financial statements include in their collective amount that they're taking in right, each of what they want.
The collective, they, they raised-
Three hundred thousand dollars, wage is up there, Greg.
But, but that, okay.
Hello?
What?
The, the fundraising dollars go to, to what, the, the hospital, and the equipment that, that they, that they purch, that they purchase. Without anyone up there, then there's, there's, it's very hard to raise money, you know, there, yes, they do have investments, it's not all endowment, they have investments, and some of it will be used when the, when the need arises, when they have campaigns, but it, it's not, the, the, the funds that are raised for the gala, it, it's, it's a net amount.
Okay, we good? So there's a motion, is it seconded?
The Council, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Okay. We're good.
We're supposed to refer to budget.
Motion passed. It, it is, yeah. Okay, Events Committee, so that is, what was that, CAO, was the motion to-
It's beginning to draft a-
A mandate.
Mandate.
Okay. Wanna make that motion there, Counselor? Okay, so moved by Counselor Barry, seconded by Deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee appointments. Go ahead.
Bring something back to the table, does that require a motion?
You mean something that's already been voted on?
They tabled the Mariners' center appointments earlier.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there should be a motion to bring it back, yeah.
I'll make the motion, we bring back the committee appointments regarding the Mariners' center, Your Worship.
Okay. CAO?
You second.
Second it? Can you second that? Okay, seconded by Counselor Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
So thank you, Your Worship, so I asked the Solicitor to look at our intermunicipal agreement in the context of the discussion around the appointments of the, of the non-elected seats, the appointment of the non-elected members, and the, the agreement is pretty specific that there is one seat for the town of Yarmouth available for an elected member and two for non-elected, so what was in my mind was maybe on an interim basis, we would appoint counselors to all those seats until we vetted the, through, through, establish a process and vet citizens. However, the agreement's pretty specific, and that would be violating the agreement and would bring with it some degree of risk, that if a decision was made by the board and some members sat improperly, contrary to the, to the bylaws essentially, that, that wouldn't be the best situation to put ourselves or our partners in. So, if you wish to, to establish a process to vet citizens prior to appointing them, then the best thing to do tonight is to appoint no citizen members, to go with just your council appointee to the board, and move rapidly to establish that vetting process so that you could fill those, those two citizen seats as quickly as possible.
And, uh- Could you re-advertise again to say that a process is still open, in case somebody else is interested, or, or we go with what we got right now?
Probably go with what we have.
That's, of course, council's choice, you have five, you have three members who've agreed that they wish to continue, and you have two new applications, but it's up to council what you wanna do in terms of soliciting additional applications. Yeah, that's, your hands aren't tied in that regard.
Okay. What do we wanna do?
So- So, Your Worship, it might be appropriate, much as we're, we're discussing a mandate for the, for the Events Committee to bring forward a recommendation to Committee of the Whole, it might be appropriate that maybe a, a small ad hoc committee work with myself to develop a, that, that vetting framework, and bring it back to Committee of the Whole as a recommendation for making these appointments to Mariners' center board, and it may be something that you'll, you'll wanna consider using for your other citizen appointments to other boards, but since it doesn't exist, let's maybe establish that ad hoc committee and, and do the work in the next couple of weeks.
Go ahead, Counselor Hood.
So would, would it maybe be appropriate to put it off till the July meeting and advise and communicate to the applicants what we're doing? And indicate to them that when we would have that resolved by the July meeting and we would consider their applications, something like that. Is it too soon? July?
I don't think so.
Would it be better to make it August?
It might be better, it might be better to make it August. The question I have is what do you wish to do in the interim, right? So you have-
Could you still do it the same way it is right now, Jack? Or do we have to appoint one counselor?
So I was wondering if we couldn't leave the people that are on there now in place, but tell them that it's a short-term appointment?
Technically, no. Last night, I was at the Mariners' board meeting, there were three citizens there, none of them have been told they can't be participating members. Had there been a close vote on anything, there, there's a bit of risk associated with that, right? Imagine they're awarding a contract.
Yeah.
And it's close, and you have three people voting, only two are technically eligible, there's a risk presented to your partners and to yourselves. So, I think-
Well, maybe we, maybe we, maybe we should be re-appointing the people that are there with an indication to them when we appoint them that we will be meeting with them at a future date to discuss the town's expectations, visioning as to how that place should be operated.
There's, you know, there, there, yes, there is, we need to do, I'm hearing council wants to do that vetting process to, to ensure that, you know, rather than just names on, on paper, that you, you've had some familiarity with the, with the vision that each of the members have, and, and maybe if they're in alignment with the town, but the issue is, is that if you just simply leave those that are there now, you're leaving the board and the municipalities in a, in potentially a risky situation. So, you either have to thank one of them or thank all of them, you could leave them all, but again, I'm just flagging that there's a risk there, just like as if we, if we appointed three counselors or two counselors, you know, we're, and they're voting at meetings, they're not properly voting at meetings and, and creating a risk. Have that right?
So when are there any, are you aware of any contractual obligations that the board may have to deal with in the near future? Is there a date?
Next meeting. Their Mariners' next meeting.
Yeah, so they're, they're not meeting for a month, I don't know if they have any, any contracts that are coming up for approval or renewal, I don't know that. I would suggest to you, we could do this process by August, July would be really pushing it. And we'll have to push it anyway to get it done by August.
So-
Okay.
Am I missing something? Because we need to, we need to figure out what the questions are to the candidates, bring them in and ask them the questions and decide.
Yep, and I also heard that during the earlier discussion, that you may want a third party involved, or at least PBSC has had a third party and, and-
That is an average.
Can I need your light on, 'cause I, I just got a note from somebody that can't hear you.
That one might be something going forward if we, with the three municipal units and that kind of a concept. I think right now, we're just gonna deal with our own people.
Okay.
And I think, given the timelines, we're gonna have to deal with it in-house.
Okay, so if we're just gonna deal with it in-house- Okay. So, if we're just going to deal with it in-house, and you're talking about something as simple as an interview process-
Yeah.
And you're talking about a subgroup of Council, I don't think this has to be terribly complicated. We just need to come up with, you know, what are the questions that we want to get into? It may be a little looser than that.
It should be framed in a very respectful way.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, they don't meet for a month. We can commit to getting it done before that, and, you know, best-case scenario, by Committee of the Whole in two weeks, worst-case scenario, in a month at a regular Council meeting.
So we would move this over to Committee of the Whole, the, uh, Committee, to Committee of the Whole?
Uh, just-
I'm talking about the actual appointments?
Potentially.
Or to the meeting in July?
Why don't we, why don't we move to, to undertake the process of, of interviews for the candidates for Mariners' Center Board, and once that is complete, as soon as practical, we'll bring those recommendations back to Council.
I'll make that a motion, that it's without an actual date.
Second.
You got that all, Lindsay? You, well, you can talk with him in the, he'll fix it up in the morning.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. So Committee Appointments, we haven't done. So we're going to do those all at once, unless anybody has any issue with any of them.
Did we already do it?
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, we did. Why did I have that written down twice? Because you told me and I listened. Good stuff. Okay. Gosh. All right, so approval of invoices.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And do we have anything else in camera? Okay, so motion to adjourn.
So.
Date of next meeting is July 11. What, Joey?
There you are. Way to you.
There you go. Thank you, folks.